Let us stand together. I know some of you just sat down, sorry. For our pledge. Attention, salute. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. And a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Welcome. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there's time for public comment. Prior to action items on the agenda, we ask speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as the time has elapsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. This evening's agenda has two modifications currently. We added under School Board Discussion Items to review a document that was delivered to us this week from the Planning Commission. And there's a session August 16th where, a public session of some type. And so we have to discuss this tonight to make sure where the board stands regarding this document. So we added that to the Agenda 6.2. And we have a presentation for Deputy Mark Currents tonight, but Mr. Ruben is running a little late and has asked if we would please wait until you arrive. So here's what's going to happen with number 2.5 on the agenda. It's going to float until we have an appearance by Mr. Ruben. And then it'll just happen. And that's the way the agenda's going to go, I think. Is there a motion to adopt that agenda? We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Great, any discussion? We're tired of discussing. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. The next item is then donations.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, we jumped ahead.
I only had two donations this month. The first one is Ashley Fraser donated a flute and a clarinet to the band program. And First Choice Plummy donated an xylophone to the band program.
That's great. All right, thank you. Those donations will be accepted during the consent agenda. And so you're aware, there's a letter that goes thanking these individuals and organizations for their contribution. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from the July 11th board meeting? We have a motion, Ms. Bynum, is there a second? Second, Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Mr. Grove, have you had opportunity to review the bills?
I have, and everything's in order. We're not too far down the line yet. We haven't spent much.
I hope not.
Well, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion, Ms. Bynum, is there a second? Second from Ms. Meyer. Beecham. Maybe it's because she's closer to me. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Reports of the superintendent. 4.1, Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first report of the superintendent is actually a report from Family Futures. So this time I will invite Mr. Tom Massey to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. Tom Massey Hampton District, as it turns out. First, I want to thank Dr. Grimsley and the board for letting Family Futures be born. Basically, we're growing up slowly but surely. The program is certainly novel, certainly has had, I think, greater effects than maybe we thought. And certainly we have, the idea of improving financial literacy within our kids is something we felt was very valuable. And as this program is growing, it seems to get bigger and have more moving parts. Without the support of Dr. Grimsley and the board for kind of letting us get our feet under us and move this thing forward, I don't think it would be possible just everywhere, even though everybody loves the idea. We presently just have a little bit of an update up until tomorrow, which we won't have our new deposits tomorrow, but we're going to add, how many kindergartners?
Sixty-seven.
So I have a few new accounts coming, but for, as of the end of the year, a little more than 280 accounts that we have. And within those accounts, we have just over $77,000 in savings for those children. This is kindergarten through now, we're fourth grade, but then at that time, third grade. And those numbers sound really great, but everybody who's, one of the things about the program, I think, is most of them are wonderful, is there's a hundred dollars given. So if you take the 270, you've got $27,000 as a gift. There's more than $50,000 earned from improved literacy within these kids and demonstrating improved knowledge. And ideally, our goal going forward is demonstrating habits of mind change, not only in the child, but maybe within their families. So I have a little bit I'll leave with you. I have some members of our board, if they can shake, wave their hand or whatever, some are familiar faces, we've got a few with us, which is lovely. And I want to introduce Ned Waterhouse, for those who haven't had the privilege of meeting him. He comes to us from a long career in education and 15 years of which was Deputy Superintendent at Loudoun County. So no stranger to education, no stranger to a good school. And I think he's been duly impressed by traveling in these halls. So should I leave this handed up?
Yep. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Grimsley. I'm excited to be here. I took, I was retired, happily retired. And found out about the opportunity and got so excited about this opportunity that I didn't hesitate to apply. And for better or for worse, they made the decision to bring me on. And first, I just want to say that my board has been unbelievably supportive and unbelievably encouraging to me because one of the things they knew I didn't know was the nonprofit world, okay? But what I did know and what I, why I'm so comfortable here is because I spent a career in public education. And you know very well how important the relationship between the school board and the superintendent and staff are. And one of the things that I have been absolutely blown away with is the people that I've encountered in your excellent school system. I had a mindset or an expectation that small meant we're going to stay right in between the lines and we're going to go along the predictable route. And as soon as I met Shannon, I knew that would probably not be the case. And I say that with great, I can't even think of the word, but I have great respect for the fact that you all have built a system that is open to new ideas, that is tuned in to solving issues and problems in your own way, internally, you know, figuring it out. And you've created these wonderful partnerships with other entities, both private and public. So when I joined Loudoun County, it's 1977, it was like this in the sense that it was a much smaller system and people worked together and relied on each other to put their heads together and figure things out and do the best job they could at all times for kids, job one. And it's very clear here that not only the school board, but the board supervisors has an appreciation for how important public education is and how much the things that you decide to do and the chances you take, I don't mean wild risk, I mean new ideas, can impact young lives and can impact your community in massive ways down the road. Our program is one of those kind of ventures because I'm sure I will be gone by the time the first inaugural class comes in and lines up for their opportunities to get what amounts to a $15,000 scholarship for every student that graduates from this school system. That is not to be taken lightly. I hope I won't be dead, but I don't think I'll be here at that point. But we're all working based on a vision and a hope for our future, and that's where our kids are, obviously. And that's what public education is in the business of. And I'm not going to keep blah, blah, blahing, but I will tell you, this is an impressive place and this is not what people expect when they look around and make generalizations about public education. This is a unique system. This is a very, very outstanding system. And I'm really excited about working not just with Shannon, but with her staff and the other excellent people here to do the best I can to be a part of helping to make that happen. So thank you for your time tonight, and it's a pleasure to be here and meet all of you.
All right, welcome to the family, Ned.
Thank you.
Yes, we're very, very proud of Family Futures and the programs that they have been enacting in the schools. And my son is also in that program. And it's really neat to see those statements come home and a lot of information about what that means for him. And we're having those conversations about his potential usage of those in the future. So it's just one point of clarification, I heard 15,000 scholarship, 15 hundreds? I hope it grows to that much.
That would be a great interest rate.
But there may be other opportunities too where kids can earn additional money into those accounts by working with different agencies. So it's a great opportunity, great program. Of course, I'm thrilled about it. So we'll continue to give updates.
Are you going to do the next one, do your next item?
I can, okay. Really quickly, some back-to-school events that we've been celebrating this week. Let me pull that up. Of course, we had greeted our new teachers on the 31st of July and the 1st of August. A wonderful group of educators and what I love, I love to see former students come back home to teach, and that's been great to see. But I'm blown away by the talent, which is, you know, equally impressive is when you have veteran teachers from other counties that have heard about what has been going on in the schools and they really want to work in Rapid Hanning. So we have that too. So it's like a beautiful blend, really talented individuals joining our team. I'm thrilled. It's going to be the best year yet. So part of the new teacher orientation is reviewing all the hiring, financial paperwork, time with the principals. Headwaters provided a nice lunch for them. And then, of course, they go through all their technology training, academic expectations, they get to meet their mentors and spend time with them, and then some, of course, essential special education training. We had a wonderful convocation on August 2nd. Creating magic is our theme this year. We've talked about that already. We introduced new staff and we had a wonderful keynote address by Colonel Gary Settle, the State Superintendent of the Virginia State Police. So that was awesome. It was really well received. And Jackie Teedrick, who works here in the Commit to Be Fit program, as one of our wellness integration specialists, got to introduce him. And for those of you who don't know, that's his baby sister. And it just brought a really warm family feel to the beginning of the year, which is exactly what we wanted. But he gave a great inspirational message. And then we had all the lovely things that teachers love when they come back to school, which is all the professional development that we have to accomplish before school starts. We had some onsite professional development based on some of our regular items, principals' meetings, grade book, the Commit to Be Fit team, some school safety training, and Handle with Care, which is replacing our old MANT training. So Handle with Care is a more comprehensive de-escalation conflict resolution and also physical contact, should that be necessary for restraint, exclusion, training that everybody needs to have that may deal with that, those kinds of situations. Then we had some online professional development that was there too, the staff had to complete. Tried to give a little balanced approach. And we also sent out the online training early so teachers could get a start on that should they choose. And then communications, we had our back-to-school bulletin. This was the second year in a row that we had issued that online using a new format. We have been told wonderful things about that. It's very mobile-friendly as well and a lot more hits using it that way too as well on our counter. So that's been good for communicating dates. And also our parent university site is still up and running, so that's where we house about three to five-minute videos on important items such as completing back-to-school forums online, which is a new process for a lot of folks. So it can take some time, but that shows you step by step. Okay, that was our back-to-school activities, but we are ready. This is going to be the best school year ever. Everyone's very excited. Tomorrow we will start, yes.
We need to find a senior to change the number out there.
Yeah, that'll be coming. When they come in the building, they will change that, probably the first day. The seniors don't like that one either. All right, would you like to do floating agenda item?
Yes, floating agenda item 2.5, special recognition. This evening, we have a motion. Mr. Ruben.
I'm moved to approve the resolution honoring Deputy Mark Currents.
You have a motion from Mr. Ruben, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Grove, any comment? Thank you for your service. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Ms. Currents, if you would come up to the stage as we read and present this resolution for the board.
You can tell how excited he is because he's smiling so big.
Rappahannock County Public Schools Resolution honoring the service and dedication of School Resource Officer Deputy Mark Currents. Whereas Deputy Mark Currents has been a school resource officer for nine years for Rappahannock County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia, and whereas school resource officers work with school administrators, security staff, faculty on developing comprehensive safety plans to ensure schools are safe places for students to learn, and whereas Deputy Mark Currents has made a long-lasting impact on all of the individuals he has encountered and dedicated countless hours to ensure their safety and well-being, and whereas he has been a positive influence for students, staff, and the community who he vowed to protect, honor, and serve, whereas the support he has provided students will positively impact generations for years to come. And now therefore be it resolved, the Rappahannock County School Board recognizes Deputy Mark Currents for his service to the students, parents, and community of Rappahannock County, Virginia. Be it further resolved, this expression of appreciation and gratitude be made a part of the permanent records of the county and that a copy of the resolution be presented to Deputy Mark Currents by the Rappahannock County School Board dated this 8th day of August of 2023.
It's all a smile, I got it in me. I asked him when he retired, he said a week ago, so we called him in, this is a... It's good to see you all, thanks for coming tonight. All right, 4.3.
All right, the next item on the agenda is just a quick overview of some summer programs that we had going on. Usually Jenny would give this update and I didn't have a chance to connect with her, but I had plenty of pictures that she sent us for updates, so we'll go through some of that. Terrific Thursday is that program that we have every week during summer school on Thursdays, which takes summer school students and others who apply to be a part of it to different locations. It's also a great incentive to get your summer school enrollment numbers back up, so that it really helped too, along with Headwaters, who offered full-day enrichment for us for that second half, which was two reasons I think our numbers and enrollment went really well during summer school. Terrific Thursday, not so much because of the smoke that kept coming in on Thursdays. It was like a Thursday thing, I don't know. So they really, I think, only met in one time out of the month of June, but that day was great. Next is Fun in the Sun Camp, if this will come. All right, it's being a little one, because they change buildings when they do that. Sometimes some of the pictures don't come across. So Terrific Thursday, they did some stream exploration. They made some lifelong memories. All right, and then Fun in the Sun at Graves Mountain was also very successful, lots of different workshops. And I know Jenny usually says that one of the best parts of this is really having the camp counselors working, which are teenagers from the high school, working with the younger students. And that builds so much sense of responsibility and they really do take such pride in that job. And they are paid for that work too, and it teaches them habits of earning, Family Futures and all those wonderful things. So it's part of those habits that we like to instill. Pathways Academy this year, very, very successful, great group of kids. In that program, there is intensive work with learning adulting basically after high school and things that students really worry about. This program really addresses a lot of that. So there was some financial education that again, Family Futures provided during that, and also how to change attire and how to change oil, how to pick up good interview clothing and how to conduct an interview, and then job shadowing experience that went with that. And then one of my favorite parts of this program is actually at the end when they have to stand up in front of all those who had made the program possible and give a presentation about their experience. And some of these students I've known a very long time and I just, I'm like, ooh, I'll see how they do. And every time, they blow me away. They just learn so much in such a short time and do such a great job. So that's been a wonderful program. It's very, very well received, but it is completely privately funded. So that's one of the things that we go out and write grants for every year and try to build a lot of support around. And Pathways Academy is a collaboration with RAPC, RAP Center of Education, and it started that way. And that collaboration with Jenny Capson and our CPS has just been an amazing program. So thank you. And these ladies right here who make a lot of these programs happen, or did this past year, Lisa Hyzer, Jenny Capson, Stephanie Cash, Lacey Jenkins, and Randy Good, who was our onsite nurse, who is now actually taking over as our telepresenter at elementary school, the Fit Kids Clinic. So she'll be our nurse there. And one of the summer programs that I didn't put on here, but I have a member who went, was Summer Quest. And my daughter Rosie said she would love to actually talk to you about that, if that's okay. I'm roping her into it. But Summer Quest is actually a regional governor's school program for middle school students, and that happened this summer. You can come up see. And that's a program she really looks forward to. She's a rising seventh grader. And she offered, so I'm going to take it. She's way cuter than I am.
I know, so.
This class, this class.
I applied for a class. It was the drama class, and that's the class that I got into. It's a really, really good program and I already miss it. I've made so many friends there that just are like me. And with group you get set into, like drama, art, other extracurricular classes are like super fun and you get to meet very new people. It's very friendly, there's no drama there, it's...
No drama in drama.
No. But the play you put on, it's really fun. All you do in drama is you create all your own costumes, you create the whole script, you do all the props and other stuff like that. So you design the entire play, all the students do, and the teacher just kind of leads them into the right direction. In each class, they have a presentation at the end of the two weeks that you're there to do all that stuff. And you present it to all the parents that their children go to this very amazing program. And it's very fun. I loved it.
Right, thanks for taking it down.
Just happened on the way over, but she makes a good pitch, I think, that why these programs are important. And what was important there, Ladonna Gorham, who's actually retiring, she's run the program for years. She's retiring from Summer Quest, not from Fakir's programs that she's running over there, but they had the same level of funding for regional governor's school pro, summer regional program since 1987. So it's been level funded to keep that scene going. It's one of those things that we do have parent dues and the schools make contributions. Rappahannock is one of the counties that continues to fund student tuition to that program as well so that they get their fees paid for, get their T-shirts, get the program. So we cover most of that cost and we always have since I can remember.
Is that something, I've been a parent of Summer Quest kids and it's always a great experience. I'm so happy you had it, Rosie. But they always mention that, one of the complaints, the main complaint the parents and students have is it's only four days of the week, and they do all of that in just eight days, which is amazing. But I'm wondering if there, you know, we have, we're able to get grant-funded so many other things, I don't know if we could explore with the other schools, how we might have that be a full two-week...
It comes up every single year.
And I know it's been level funded because that was said, you know, 12 years ago.
Yes. It is quite an effort with all the, well, there's three counties in ours that come together to run that program in intensive two weeks. And it does coincide with some of the other things that are going on in the other districts, but we are very well aware of the fact that, you know, parents are saying, can we do one more week? You know, that's come up every year. But it's just been, yeah, that's something the gifted coordinators tackle just about every year and there's, for whatever reasons, one or all or districts kind of have trouble getting everybody to commit to that timeframe for the work that they put into run that. But it is, yes, I agree. I'm a little biased, I would consider it really great, but.
Push more funding that way somehow with grants or letters to the state board or anything. I'd be willing to go along that route because it's such a valuable program.
It really is. Thank you. Any other questions about summer programming?
I can mention about RAP Nature Camp, which is, so I'm now the director of Rappahannock Nature Camp. And this, this summer, we did, we had four weeks of camp and it was the most fun thing that, like, for everybody. We have a really stable staff. Ledwood still is working as a counselor, so he's just happening doing the fun stuff, not the organizing stuff, which is what I enjoy organizing and making sure we know ahead what we're doing, and that's been really fun for me. We had about, we had 11 weeks of, sponsored by the, 11 Canberra Weeks sponsored by the Emily Hilcher Passion Award, students that are specifically at Rappahannock Schools, in addition to several Rappahannock students blended with kids from all over. There was kids who came from Northern Virginia for a vacation week to be at RAP Nature Camp. And that was that mixing of kids. There were kids from Madison, Wisconsin who came for two weeks, and there were kids who came from Florida. And so it was really almost like an at Rappahannock vacation for some of these kids who've grown up here and don't realize the tremendous value of being in the Hazel River and learning every little thing you can and stopping for every snake and moth that you see. They do amazing work. It's a week-long program and on every Friday, there's an open house and we have families come, we do singing, the kids each do their own sort of science fair style project, but based on their own authentic observations of what their topic is. And we, the one testament that was really fun was that we started off, our enrollment for the last session was just like six kids, but it went up to 16 kids by, because it built by word of mouth how fun it was and kids requested and did more. So I'm really excited to continue that. I think it's just one of the, it's, my kids again grew up doing that too, and it's really fun and it really does, it fits with my farming season. fun. And it really does, it fits with my farming season, which is my other job. So it's a good, been a good, a wonderful thing. And it's really neat to see our kids, you know, interacting with kids from all over and also opening their eyes. There was, there were kids from Rappahannock who had never seen a bluebird before, or who hadn't ever noticed that there were orange mushrooms in the forest. So just those things are unique opportunities that we, that we're providing and kids who
They, they were the city kids from
No, they were, they were the kids, they're the kids from Chester Gap, a long, nice long bus ride past all those
Educational experience.
Yeah, it was a great, it was a great experience, and I'm really pleased to even just open our own eyes to what special thing we have. Just as, as our director was saying of Family Futures, we have a really unique physical location and group of people here. And it gets lost on us sometimes.
Everybody doesn't have that. So that's, that's what I want.
You also have a, a Rappahannock graduate that is your medical director.
We do, yeah. Gus, so Gus Garcia is at Carefree Second Year. He'll be back with a third year. He's an amazing birder. And we had the rescue squad visit one smoky day.
He's in his third year at VCU in nursing school. So that's good to know.
Yeah, and our other counselor is a second grade teacher at Foc Hears, who I convinced her to come look at our elementary school and the courtyard and everything. So she's impressive that we have here.
There's so many. Over the summer, we have, we do have some, and I know the Rappahannock Kids Coalition really gets together and tries to put all that on one list, because there are so many opportunities. And I mentioned the few that we help run and organize and things, but, you know, like the Headwaters Summer Course Program and Bell Meads Camp that was going on. And CCLC has one, it's just amazing. There are a lot of options. And the RAP Kids Coalition, what was neat about that is when you have one list, working list and things, you can try not to overlap so much, because the pool of kids in our county is
Small.
Really, but
Small.
So that's helpful too. So very unique programs for children. Any questions about that, comments?
It's just important to have those summer opportunities for kids.
For sure.
A lot of work.
A lot of work for sure. Yes. Item 4.4 is our annual review of the Rappahannock School Crisis Emergency Management Plan. And that is by code, Virginia Code 2.2-3705.2, that every year you do need to review that. That document is confidential and therefore is under your executive file to review. If there is any, it is a working document every year. And as we drill and as we meet with our consultants at VDEM and our safety team, we do update that as needed. So any comments or questions, you can give those to me offline, and I can address those with the team. All right, and with that, that concludes the reports from the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bringsley. Fred, moving on to Headwaters Representative.
I did have a chance to meet with Ms. Genoli this, this past week. And here is, she actually, one of the first things that we talked about was their, Headwaters would like to have more of a chance to talk with the school board directly with other members, with multiple members of the school board, and wanted to suggest if some additional reps, like maybe a couple of people from the board could get together with Headwaters, maybe about twice a year to, just to, so they can know that they're on a track that jives with what we want them to be. So that's, that's something to, we're going to discuss it. But they'd like to talk with more of us. And they're really nice people to talk with, and they're very open-minded about ideas that we might have. So.
I had a conversation with someone named Dave, who was just a phone call for about 30 minutes last week, I think, Sunday. He just sent me an email, said, hey, can we chat? So, and it was a follow-up of the answers to the survey that I had put in. I thought I was in trouble.
Yeah.
But I wasn't. He just needed to clarify, you know, what did you mean when you said this type of conversation, which was really helpful for both of us. So.
I think they've interviewed all of us.
Yes, yeah, yeah, they're in the process. Everybody should, I think has been interviewed at this point and about the
So you're, you're speaking of something more
They're talking about a regular, like a regular, by maybe twice a year, kind of at the end of the school year, and then holiday break.
Two of us at a time or something is over there thinking?
I think so. I think, I don't, I think it's not, it's, it's not a specific request, but it's a, it's a request to have, I mean, not a specific framework, but to have a couple people at a time speak. So that's, that would be, that's, that's something they wanted to mention. Seems like a good, a good outreach thing. They're working to hire a new read coordinator to get the read program up and running again. And this year, there'll be two tracks. One is for the accelerated students who are ahead, need more, more, who need to continue in the direction they're going. And another for students who are struggling and they're, to read at their level. So there'll be more updates on that soon. The After School Enrichment Program enrollment is open now, and I think there's an app that you can use on the phone to enroll at this point. It'll start August 15th and end December 14th for the first semester session. And there will be science, sports, and nutrition, martial arts, and arts and crafts. And then Headwaters was at teacher night at the elementary school. And unfortunately, there were not because, because of the, because it was canceled. So tonight, New York Beer was there giving out food. So unfortunately, that didn't, wasn't as well attended as it could have been. And, and then the last was on August 1st, Headwaters sponsored a lunch for the new teachers and their mentors at all as well. And there was a presentation to try to make sure people know how to connect with Headwaters resources as they enter our school system. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much. MBGS?
We've been in school for two days, moving right along. We'll meet next week, so I'll have more information at the next meeting.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the annual convention. I'm sure our clerk is wondering how many of us are planning on attending, right? Yes. Not this year, no. Mr. Groo, are you planning on going this year?
Yeah, I better go. For the day, just the day, Thursday.
Just the one day.
The Thursday is the 16th.
We just go Thursday, right?
Just the Thursday.
Yeah. I'll look at the agenda if I want to go down on Wednesday.
I'll be there. And, and we need to reach out to Missy McCool and make sure, does she, is she free? Does she go for free or?
Yes.
Because she'll be newly elected, if she wins. We'll see if she prevails in that.
Never know.
Never know.
I don't know if you saw the front sheet, but our colleague, Dave Jett from Foc Hears is one of the keynote speakers at this year's convention. So.
The keynote on, on Wednesday?
I'll, I'll look at, I'll date, but I'll look at the listed keynote speakers.
I'll, I'll look at Yeah, that's great.
Is this, is this the year that we're available, we go to the lodge or not? No, next year. Oh, yeah.
Oh, at the lodge.
Yeah, we don't usually stay, right? It's just a really long day. All right, so, so there you have it. We have two. Ms. Bynum's gonna let you know, right? And then we need to contact Ms. McCool and see what she wants to do. All right. The next thing on the agenda is this document, which was attached. Hopefully you have a chance to look at it. The Bay County Planning Commission is asking us, or is telling us that there's a public hearing on 16th of August at 7:00 PM at the courthouse regarding changes in how the lot across the street is going to be used, Blue, Blue Rock property, who's been excellent neighbors at the moment. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure we had opportunities of board to see if there's something that we as a board would want to comment at this meeting on the 16th. And we won't be meeting again before then, so we had to adjust our agenda. Is there any discussion tonight?
So do we have any more information of this one paragraph about this? No. So I did request from the county administrator some additional documents. So the application was on file there. It doesn't, I guess it's not up until the public hearing. But I did want to get more information in case there was any, anything that may hinder some of our operations at all that you may want to comment on. And the number one being what was in the previous special exemption permit, which was our use of the cross-country track, which is what I would, where my, my went initially. But it is still currently in that special exemption permit up. So they did not remove that.
So the cross-country is still available?
Yes.
That's the only thing I was worried about.
Me too.
I mean, I know that food has a different issue with the side of the property, but from a school point of view
That's not the school, that's
Yeah, from a school point of view, I think the, the traffic is not a big issue for us.
Not across the highway. And I looked at, there is, they will post, I guess, closer to the meeting, a site map and the full application before the public hearing. And when I read through that, it still was very supportive of the schools and making sure that, you know, the county knew that they were still, that is still listed in the special exemption permit that they're currently applying for. There'll be some expansion of Blue Rock and some movement of some of the buildings if approved. But it looks like it's not going to hinder the, the cross-country teams track at all. Yeah, it's really a generous event to let us use
It really is. It's fun.
It's a beautiful course. It's a challenging course, which is cool too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So the reason to bring this up is to make sure that, did the board want to make a statement at the hearing in any way? And it seems like
We want to say thank you, and we're glad that
We're gonna make a statement. I support it.
Yeah.
Aren't going to be successful. We'll draft a letter signed by the chairman in support as long, you know, thank you for allowing us to, is that okay?
Yep. Seems like we have concurrence. Is that all right? All right, we'll work through that and make sure it's available by the 16th. Thanks for that. Moving on to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to address the board this evening? Rosie? No, you're done. Anybody else like to address the board this evening? You just want school to start, right? Let's move on. All right, we have no other action items this evening. Is there any new business? I had a question. You had said something remarkable about our ADM. And I think it'd be great for the folks to hear it.
I'm sure. So very excited at the enrollment numbers right before the start of school. Of course, we need to do our 10-day counts and all of that to be sure everyone in the system is really attending. But the state had us projected at about 660 for this year, and we had 804.
Whoa.
804.
Did you hear that?
Eight hundred and four students.
Is that, is that include pre-K or not?
Includes pre-K.
It's pre-K. So what is, what is the K-12?
So we'd be looking at a 776-ish ADM versus 660.
It's 100 students.
That's, that's remarkable. And it, it speaks to what it is we're trying to do as a culture here and, and what it's attracting. So it's a wonderful number. That just grows.
Yeah, there were several.
What do you say? Keep the magic moving?
That's right.
Yeah.
That's true. Yes, we spoke to quite a few families. And there's a number of reasons. We had, first of all, really large early childhood numbers coming up from CCLC preschool. So that's why our kindergarten is so high. So we had, remember a class of 36 last year versus 67 this year. So that's a big jump for kindergarten. But that 36, you know, was a real hit to our ADM and that cohort. We lost a big senior class and then got a really small kindergarten class. So that's, was amounted to almost $100,000 revenue hit in what you projected. So that's a lot for our little school. And then we have kindergarten, then, oh, we had 53 non-resident tuition folks coming in, non-tuition waivers for if you work in the county, own land in the county, or work for the school system. And those were all throughout the different grades, and not really too much in the primary. In fact, that's where we had to deny some of the applications because we were full already.
So that didn't adversely impact anything?
Oh, no, it can't. The way this is, that our policy works, it's only empty seats.
Didn't come close, I'm sure.
Yeah, we're filled seats that were empty, who are paying for anyway, so added revenue that way. So, no, we're thrilled, but the, the stories that we're hearing from folks, oh, and homeschool families returning, a good number of homeschool, either they were homeschooling and somewhere else moved to the county during COVID, and then, you know, decided to enroll, had previously been, and then some returned to us. So that was the other number that went up quite a bit. So our enrollment looks great.
100. Fascinating. Second thing, I was gonna say, as I was on the way home tonight, and I was listening to the radio, and, and the, I think it was superintendent of Stafford County Schools said that they were ready to start tomorrow, just like us, but they have 100, over 100 instructional vacancies still in their school division. And so I was like, we're doing really well. How many vacancies do we have at this point? Just the athletic trainer?
Athletic trainer?
Athletic trainer. So we're this close to being 100%. And so if you know anybody.
Have we recruited any physicians to cover that for the time being?
Yes, we have three different folks that are going to help as sideline nurses. We can't really call them an athletic trainer without that endorsement, but at least if there's an injury, they can respond to it. We have one that's an EMT certified person, and then two sideline nurses who will help out until we can hire.
We're covered up. We might be able to find a medic that would help out if you need, if we need help.
Awesome.
At a company too.
Awesome.
So if we need it.
All right, get the word out.
There was one, I've heard, could you explain a little, some people have asked about the J-Larke study and the, and the talk about how underfunded Virginia schools are, and how urgent the need is, and whether we can do anything to, or should be doing anything more to nudge them quicker.
Absolutely. That's a great, great point. And J-Larke has helped us greatly, and I think affirmed everything that we've been saying after our work with SIFT. And since that came out, both the SDA, VAS, they put out a joint legislative statement about that and how important it is for the legislature to act now to get some of those surplus dollars back to school divisions. And they are looking at infusing, I think the last I saw was about a billion dollars back in K-12 for this current fiscal year, which would be awesome. And our supplemental basic aid cap removal language is still there on the table. So that could still happen, plus an infusion of this extra funding that is a result of the J-Larke study. But it greatly, it did show that the staffing formula currently used by Virginia, and has not been updated in over 40 years, is very inequated. It does not
Didn't that count for rural school districts apart?
Yes, and that was a big issue that we had brought up when we met. So we did meet with J-Larke when they were investigating this issue. So we were invited through our connection with the Small and Rural Coalition Schools, the Small and Rural Schools, School Coalition. So they set us up with J-Larke, and we were able to give our reports and findings as well. And those didn't make, make it for the most part, other than LCI. They didn't agree with us on the LCI part. They think AGI is perfectly okay to include, but we can argue that later. But they did find that the enrollment less than 2,000 in school divisions was where it's really difficult to capture the economy of scale needed to operate a small rural school division. And so J-Larke putting that in print was really great. And then one other major thing for us, that we get that question all the time, is transportation in rural school divisions too, is really highlighted in that report. It's one of those areas that looks inflated in the small rural school, but folks don't understand that they're, you know, the, the density, the population density spread out over those miles, and the number of buses you need and routes and wear and tear on buses and things. So all of those go into account. So that's another economy of scale adjustment they, they were looking at. So all good things, they all help. Keith Perigin from Coalition's Small Rural Schools did also put out an op-ed that you can read. I think that went out in the Richmond Times or something like that. But he sent it to the legislators too, again urging to look at those items. So the, the support cap removal, the economy of scale adjustment, the at-risk add-on provision, looking at that, capital infusion dollars, all those were legislative priorities for looking at that, capital infusion dollars, all those were legislative priorities for Coalition. So there's a lot of attention, and they have been deliberating, and they have some information for us by Monday, is what I hear, so.
See. I believe it won't see it.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of pressure, anyway.
Thank you for that. Are there any requests from board members for future agenda items this time?
I'm gonna ask again about where we are with our Sola, see where that goes.
Well, we had our Sola report, right? And we basically said we're gonna take next steps, the group that came, right?
Yep.
So that's where...
So that's where we are, and they have to come in and complete that assessment and get the next phase for you.
Yeah. Now, he didn't give us a timeline on that, but it seemed to me that it was months.
There's a time limit.
Three months.
Years.
Three years before the implementation.
Before we actually see it go.
Yeah, but, and the initial step was the evaluation of our facilities.
Yeah, he's gonna start that now, but the pipeline of getting those things is years.
All right. Anything else requested, future agenda items, anyone? Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is the 12th of September at 6:30 in the same room. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move the board convening closed session for purpose, discuss and consider the appointment of staff with professional physicians, classified physician and coaching physicians, and discussion of superintendent's goals pursuant to Code, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, and discussion of people personnel, 232401, pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A2.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.